All right, thank you all. Hello? All right, thank you all for being here. Thank you, Austin, for getting our tech all sorted out. Board member Amanda Grubler is joining remotely. I'd also like to welcome Dr. Bailey and call the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leslie Roelkohl, please.
First, can we just, here's the paper to sign up.
Ah, gotcha. Yes, if anybody would like to speak, sign up for a public comment, please sign up at Leslie's desk.
Mark De Pace.
Here.
Amanda Grubler.
Here.
Kirsten Gustafson.
Here.
Diana Howard.
Here.
Matthew McRer.
Here.
And Maureen Sheridan.
Here.
And Labona Prova.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? That brings us to our student representative report.
So, everyone's getting ready for school. Don't really have anything since school's not starting, but there's been volleyball tryouts so far and a lot of other sports tryouts.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have a presentation from Johnson Controls about our EPC project.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Justin Benoit. I'm the Director of Project Delivery with Energia. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm joined by two team members from Johnson Controls as well. I'll let them introduce themselves in a moment, but we're here tonight really to give an update to everyone on the progress and the status of the energy performance contract opportunity that we've been working on, both Energia and Johnson Controls on behalf of the district. So certainly want to say if there's any questions or anything like that, really the point of us being here is just for that. Give an update, answer any questions, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps before Johnson will get into some of the scope and financials of the project. I'll do a brief reintroduction to Energia. We've certainly been working with the district for some time now, serving as your energy consultant for this opportunity. You know, we were involved from the very beginning, kind of, you know, analyzing if there was an opportunity and what that opportunity might be for a self-funding energy project. And ultimately, we've been been involved through many steps since then, which I'll touch on in a moment, and will continue to be involved through the next steps as well. Really, again, serving as the owner's rep, but also as the engineer of record. And so we'll be responsible for the design plans and specifications and going up to the state education department for approval as well. We have a lot of experience in this, and it's been great working with the district and your representatives so far, so thank you for that. Not to go too much into detail as to what's on the screen here, but just a little refresher for everyone. Energy performance contracting, you know, the types of projects that we're talking about here are self-funding, energy-focused projects. So we've went through, we've identified opportunities to make improvements to the school facilities. Those upgrades, those improvements will drive energy savings, and then ultimately, the energy savings are then leveraged as the funding source for the upgrades themselves. Really, the keynote there is that those energy savings are guaranteed to you contractually, so that you have, again, the energy savings coming to fruition and the funding source to satisfy debt service payments on the overall project. So I think that kind of sums up the key points of the slide here. Now to kind of recap some of the activity that we've taken to date. It was about a year ago now where Energia issued a request for proposals document. We were soliciting multiple different, what's known as, energy services contractors, or ESCOs, to submit comprehensive energy performance contract proposals. As a result of that process and a thorough evaluation and interview process that took place afterwards, Johnson Controls was selected as the winner of that contest and approved to proceed with the Comprehensive Energy Audit, or the CEA. So that was spring, ultimately when that formal award, that formal authorization, I should say, was granted. And since then, we've been working very closely with Johnson to develop and finalize this comprehensive energy audit. And so ultimately, again, tonight, we wanted to share an update with everyone on the scope and financials of the project. Again, we could speak a little bit more to the timeline as well and next steps. And then ultimately, at the next meeting, I believe it's the September 16th, that is the meeting where we would be seeking approval from the board to execute a contract with Johnson Controls, at which point, we would move forward with design, financing, and then construction. Again, wanted to see if there are any questions beforehand, share the scope, so you have some time to kind of digest everything before we seek a vote at the next meeting. I think that was it for me. And so I'll turn it over to John and Kiran here, and they'll, like I said, walk through some more of the scope and financials.
Hi, good evening. I'm John Sanborn with Johnson Controls, John Sanborn with Johnson Controls, one of the account execs on your project, and I'm joined here by my colleague, Kiran Moran. Thanks for having us tonight, and we'd like to, just as Justin mentioned, share with you some updates from the work we've been doing all summer on the Comprehensive Energy Audit. So I'll get right into it. Just a reminder that along with your budget this spring and May, as well as the capital project that you're working on, the EPC, the energy performance contract, did receive community approval for the 10% additional state aid, building aid. So the project overview, it hasn't changed much from what we presented in the spring, but here tonight, we have sort of the finalized numbers. So the project consists of 15 energy conservation measures across your buildings. We're required to meet an 18-year payback for the SED guidelines, so your project falls just under that. Over the term, the project produces over $3.8 million of positive cash flow. It's a project cost of just under $8 million, or 7.9 million. The annual savings that will be generated are just over $430,000 annually at a New York State building aid ratio of 68.5. Again, it was 58.5, and then the additional 10% with the voter authorization gets you to 68.5. There are rebates and incentives associated with these types of projects, one being the NICE-ERTA Flex Tech program that we are utilizing. That helps pay for some of the comprehensive energy audit activities that we've been doing this the summer. And also on the energy efficiency side through National Grid, some rebates and incentives there as well. So I mentioned 15 energy conservation measures. They're listed here in detail and what building each of the ECMs scopes will be installed in. I won't go through every single one, but again, each one of these energy conservation measures, facility improvement measures, focus on energy savings, some with lower payback to help fund some of the more capital-intensive measures. So really, the big bulk of the scope of work in this project is the boiler replacement in this building. The heating system in this building will be completely gutted and replaced. It's currently a steam system in the boiler room. That steam is converted to hot water that's circulated throughout the building, but that boiler plant is, I think, original to the building, 1969, and it's reached its end of its useful life, and there are some energy savings and operational savings to be had by installing a new high-efficiency system. So that's really one of the main scope drivers of the project. Again, there are many other ECMs, I won't go through every single one. Certainly, if you have questions on any one of them, be happy to go into them, but that's really the heart of the project with many of the other ECMs, helping providing the funding, the energy savings to fund the boiler replacement. So one of the ECMs that is helping providing a good basis of funding mechanism is your existing solar PPA asset that sits out back here. And so that asset is currently contracted under what's known as a power purchase agreement. And so where you are in that contract is in year eight, and there's an opportunity to leverage a heavily discounted buyout clause, convert that system to district ownership. And by doing this through the energy performance contract, you will now receive, once that buyout occurs, there will no longer be a lease payment. Currently, the district pays about $140,000 a year for leasing of that system. So by doing that in the energy performance contract, it helps provide funding, additional funding to help with things like the capital-intensive boiler upgrade. And in working with Tyler through the process, we were analyzing future maintenance-type activities, and so we did, you know, one of the main workhorses of that system are the inverters that convert the electricity. And so what we've done in the EPC is we've included a full inverter replacement. Those inverters are now eight years old, and so along with the EPC, we'll be in full inverter replacement. So the district will be in good shape going forward with the operation of that system.
I just have one quick question, if I may. What's the actual lifespan of the solar panel itself?
So the panels themselves are warranted for 25 years. They'll continue to produce after that. They do degrade about 0.2% each year, so after 25 years, you may be getting 85% out of the system, but it will still be producing energy.
2% less every year?
0.2%.
0.2% less every year.
So again, I mentioned the boiler plant. So right here on the screen are pictures of the existing plant from 1969, and so what we're proposing to do is replace that system, as I mentioned, with new hot water condensing, high-efficiency condensing boilers, along with cogeneration units. The rest of the measures really sort of low payback measures that are helping with the economics of the project. They represent a total of about $1.7 million in total cost, but produce an annual savings of over $187,000, or a 9.3-year simple payback. So I'll pass it to Kiran to talk about some of the economics, just as an overview of the project.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, my name's Kiran Moran. Good to see everyone again. Just wanted to walk you through the cash flow analysis that we did, and we've been working with Bernie Donegan, your fiscal advisors. They will help the district in the process when funding comes around to run the RFP. So we've been having normal cadence calls with them regarding the bond work, but also the EPC work and the funding of this when it comes up. We ran a cash flow at 4.25% interest rate, which is what we're seeing today, hopefully, in the near future. That rate drops a bit, and that would be a benefit to the school district, so we're hopeful that that happens. We also ran it with your 68.5% voter approval, NICE-EDAID. So anything you do under this project, 68.5% of it comes back in aid to the school, so it's a wonderful thing, and it's why lots of school districts like yourselves do these projects, because they're heavily aided. If we were to look at year one, which is the first column, you can see your lease payment would be $727,000 out for the repayment of the project, and that'll go for 15 years. You see the energy savings at 297. O&M savings, which is operational and maintenance savings, as you can imagine with those 1969 vintage boilers, there's clearly some maintenance savings to be had. The new LED lights also produce some nice maintenance savings and operational savings as well. The NICE-EDAID is that is your 68.5% coming back to the school, and then the guaranteed rebates of $206,000 also coming back to the school district. So when you look just in year one alone, it's a positive cash flow back to the schools of 295. So, you know, it is a nice cash flow right out of the gate. When you look at it over the full term of its life, of this project, the full 18 years, that then drives back the 3.8 million that we talked about earlier. So, you know, a nice positive cash flow, and yeah, and so thank you. And then we have the timeline here. So April through June, we've been working, as we talked about, on this Comprehensive Energy Audit, working through all the measures with Tyler and his staff. Through the end of July this month, the, sorry, I just chirped something over here. Oh, we got an email. Working through the contracts, so your attorney, Keenan Bean, has redlined our contract, and so that's ongoing. And then, so we would look, once that's successfully done, hopefully by the September meeting, you have a clean contract to sign, agreed to by your attorneys, and so we could execute that. We would then go from October through April, obtaining SED permits. So Energia would then file all of the SED paperwork up to Albany, as you do with your bond projects, same process to get permits. Once that's done, that's when you would engage Bernie Donegan's office, once you have the permits in hand, to help you with the funding. They would put out a lease, an RFP for a lease purchase, you'll get banks to bid on that. That's when hopefully you get less than 4.25% rate from the banks. You'll then secure that loan, and then we can start in hopefully June of 2026, so next June, and we're anticipating through March of 2027. So trying to dovetail this with your bond work as well, so that's why Mr. Sharkey has been involved in a lot of our conversations, as well as to what we're doing and what they're doing under the bonds, that there is no overlaps, but that there's also coordination between the two projects. And then looking to do training of school personnel in January of 2027, and then the final commissioning in February of 2027, so, okay. Any questions?
Any questions?
So there's a previous slide, but could you explain what simple payback is?
So simple payback means if you took the total cost of the project and divided it by all of the energy savings and operational savings, that then gives you a number, and that number is called the simple payback. The state requires it to be under 18 years without the building aid, but when you add in the building aid, it becomes much better. But the state wants to see it without any building aid. When you do add the building aid, if 68% of the total project cost came off, it would be much better than 18 years. It would probably be, I don't know, eight or nine years would be the simple payback with building aid included. But for their purposes, they want to see it clean first. Does that make sense?
Yes, I have another question, sorry.
Sure, it's all right.
Could you explain what energy conservation measures are? Like, what does the acronym like stand for? ECM?
ECM, yes, that's, engineers like to do a lot of acronyms, so ECM, Energy Conservation Measures. So it just, the boilers, the replacement of the boilers, we call that the boiler ECM. The lighting replacement of the LED lights, we call that the lighting ECM, so that's just how we call them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No?
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next. He's a former teacher at the East River Central School District. He's had a lot of experience helping school districts organize a trap team. Behind me is John Sheldon. He is the range safety officer at the Hudson Fish and Game Club, and the club will be a partner in this, the Hudson Fish and Game Club will be a partner in the Hudson Bluehawk Clay Target Club. So a lot of people don't really know what a clay target club is, let alone what trap shooting is. So I wanted to prepare this presentation to explain what it is. This is a very new and exciting club. It's grown across our country. It's growing across New York State. I believe there's about 174 high schools in New York State that have a clay target club. Across the country, I believe there's about 50,000 high schools that have a clay target club. So a clay target club, it's a league of five or more individuals that participate in a clay target shooting competition. In this exciting sport, athletes use shotguns to break ceramic discs launched by a thrower going 40 miles an hour. It's a very old sport. It's been around since colonial times. It's actually an Olympic sport. It's been around since the year 1900. In the year 2000, they created a women's league, and now the trap team, the Olympic track team is coed. So trap shooting is probably the most common clay target shooting sport in America. The sport features one target-throwing machine, which is called the trap, and athletes take turns shooting the targets that fly out in front of them. Most schools have trap-shooting ranges nearby. The Hudson Fish and Game Club is on Route 66, just a mile away from the Chrysler Jeep dealership. So it's very close by, it's very accessible for our students to get there. And this is what a trap range looks like. So as you see up there on the screen, that beige-looking box, that's called the trap, and inside the trap is a machine that launches out the clay discs. There are five stations. The goal is for each of those competitors to hit 25 out of 25 clay targets that are launched from the trap. There's station one, two, three, four, and five. So each competitor has, you know, they shoot five targets, and then they rotate. Seated on that chair is the range safety officer. He keeps score, he makes sure that all rules are followed. Safety is very, very, very important. The USA Clay Target League, their motto is "Safety, Fun, and Marksmanship." So the job of the range safety officer is to make sure everyone's safe. Everyone has to wear hearing protection. Everyone has to wear goggles, safety glasses. Everybody has to have their firearm pointed in a safe direction. So in this sport, you know, they're using actual firearms, shotguns, single-barrel, single-shot shotguns that use actual shot shells. single-barrel, single-shot shotguns that use actual shot shells. So all athletes that join this club, they're going to require firearm safety instruction. Everyone would have to take the New York State, I guess it's called the Junior Hunter Course. The Hunter Safety Course, yes. John usually instructs that at the club. He is willing to teach any student, instruct them in that. Gun safety is a big part of this. There's athlete and coach insurance provided by the USA Clay Target League for all registered coaches and for all registered athletes. There are strict policies and procedures. There's about one coach for every ten athletes. The best thing about this sport is since the year two thousand and one, there have been zero injuries reported. We all hear about concussions in football, sprains, broken bones in football, soccer, even in baseball. Other sports, clay target sports and in trap, there have been no reported injuries or anything. Safety is a major concern. I know we're using real firearms. And to tell you the truth, at all the clubs I've ever been to, the community, the sportsman's club, the community, it's a very tight-knit group of people. Safety is very important. If anyone is doing something they're not supposed to be doing, members are very quick to point out, hey, you can't do that. This is what you're supposed to do. At John's club, he's in charge, so there's rules written on the clubhouse. The students have to follow those rules. They have to recite them. He's taught trap to students at other school districts, I believe Taconic Hills. So he makes the students read the rules every time they enter the range. So it's, you know, safety, safety, safety. That is the most important thing. And clay target shooting sports is, it's one of the safest sports nationwide. We all know that when students are engaged in extracurricular activity, makes their lives a lot better. Students that are engaged in a sport, in clubs, they tend to have better grades. They tend to do well on tests. There's a lot of good that comes from this club. There is a potential for college scholarships. A lot of colleges across the country. There's at least five or six New York colleges that have a trap team, a clay target sport team, lettering program. So it's, there's, you know, there's a lot of kids in our district. I was a class advisor for the class of twenty-twenty-five. About a hundred and three kids were in that class. I am willing to bet, and maybe Laura, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm willing to bet maybe thirty or forty percent of those kids were involved in a sport or a club. Yeah, so this is a club that could attract kids. It's another opportunity to engage kids in something outside of school, something extracurricular. You know, joining a club, being part of a team, higher self-esteem, better grades, less likely to abuse drugs, alcohol, tobacco, more likely to be involved in your community. A lot of times, kids that, you know, compete in trap, they become members of the sportsman's club. Sportsman's Club offers a lot of amenities. There's a pond, there's fishing. It's a, you know, it's an outdoor activity. So the kids leave their phones behind for a little while, for a couple hours. They're outdoors. They're engaged in this great, exciting, fun sport. So how do schools compete against each other? So the competition between schools are usually virtual. So the Hudson team would go to the Hudson Fish and Game Club and say, we were competing against Ichabod or Taconic Hills or Lansenberg. Those are all schools that have a trap team. Well, they would go to their sponsoring club, and then scores are recorded and uploaded to the league by the team staff. The USA Clay Target League uses those scores to rank athletes for competition. Usually, so all the competitions between schools are virtual, but then in June, there's a statewide competition in Syracuse where all the schools' students are invited to come and participate and compete. All right, so the state tournaments, all are invited, all right? So at the end, and just like I said, at the end of the spring season, every league has a state tournament in June. It's an exciting in-person event. It caps off the school year in the spring season. It provides athletes the opportunity to compete in real time against other teams from across the league. Every athlete that participates in the spring season is invited to compete in their respective classifications based on season average. Everyone will get a chance to shoot a hundred targets. And there's a chance to win awards as well. The state tournaments are very family-friendly. I believe in, I don't know about the twenty-twenty-five tournament, but I know in the twenty-twenty-four tournament, thousands of people showed up. Not just the students that were competing, but their families, their friends, classmates, a lot of people showed up. I believe close to, was it maybe ten thousand? About ten thousand people showed up to Syracuse for the state trap competition. So there's a school team, tent, flags, uniforms. People came, cheered on their teams, cheered on the athletes. I do have a video, but I guess it's not loading. I hit next? Okay. All right, and then I just hit next to play the video? Oh, nope, sorry. Let me go back. So this is a short, two-minute news segment about the twenty-twenty-four New York trap competition, statewide trap competition. So I wanted to show this to everybody here.
Can I ask you a question while he's getting the video up?
Sure.
What age levels are you targeting?
Twelve and up are allowed to participate. So anyone, the great thing about this team, about this club, anyone can participate. Boys, girls, people with disabilities. The league says you have to be at least twelve to compete.
And does this lead to their New York State Youth Hunting License, the training that you're putting the kids through? Would this qualify as that?
What's that?
You know, the youth training program that they have for the New York State Hunting License?
You have to take that course as part of being.
So they would qualify for their New York State Hunting License as a youth?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Being an eight-hour course.
It's usually offered on weekends.
...trap shooting contests throughout the state in Bridgeport, the Saturday. The event allows students to showcase their aim while also focusing on gun safety. Our demo trainer brings us the perspective.
Trap shooting is a momentum across New York. In twenty sixteen, this tournament had five hundred participants in it. Now in twenty-twenty-four, almost two thousand shooters here in a league that's so focused about safety with a loaded weapon and having fun.
This isn't your traditional school sporting event. Students and families from across New York fill the Bridgeport Rod and Gun Club for the annual high school tournament. Organizers call trap shooting a sport for everyone.
It is fantastic to see all the different kids from all walks of play. You know, we have, so Matt said like it broke your foot, or they need stool to lean on to shoot, because there are absolutely no bench players in clay target shooting.
Two local shooters from the Plaski Central School District trap team, Peyton Crandall and Cole McNitt, are in their second year of clay target shooting. They both are enjoying the process of learning to love the sport.
I like how it's kind of individual. You have a team, but you don't have to rely on them to do well or do bad. You can kind of get away from people and just think of your own things and shoot and have fun. And every time you bring a target, it's just satisfying when you do it because it's hard to do it.
With almost two thousand students starting at twelve years old, there are important safety requirements and a deep respect for firearms amongst these shooters.
And I think it's really important that students have the opportunity to be able to learn their responsibility to be able to handle something that not everybody's familiar with.
It feels really good because I think there's a lot of bias and opinions around guns. And for people to just see that thousands of kids came together and do good things with it is really good.
It was scary at first, and I can't stop there because there's nothing really to be scared of. It's just you become, you're just making safety.
While this isn't a certified, smolastic school sport yet, the USA Clay League is hoping they can work with New York State to make it one in the future as they say, trap shooting is a sport that everyone can participate in. Reporting from Bridgeport, I'm Dale O'Shea.
Shooting USA is brought to you by Busbare Customs Nineteen-eleven.
All right, so, you know, why have a high school clay target club? You know, again, there's a lot of local schools that have a clay target club. Ichabod has one. I believe Taconic Hills has one. Maple Hill, they're organizing one. Ichabod is starting one. Lansenberg, they have a team. I believe in Green County, are there teams? Cooks, Yachins? Yep, Greenville. So there's a lot of local schools, you know, schools that we could compete against. I think these are some of the six important reasons why we should have a clay target club. I think teaching kids gun safety, responsibility, you know, firearm maintenance, firearm safety, having respect for firearms. I think it builds character. You know, a trap club, trap team, it's a team. It's teamwork. Everybody cheers each other on. Everybody helps one another out. It's a very inclusive sport, so again, anyone can join. There are no bench warmers. Nobody's sitting on a bench. I, you know, I've seen our basketball games, and there are some kids who don't get to play for whatever reason. But in a clay target club, everyone gets a chance to go to the line and try their best. And it's a team sport, so it's all about gaining points for your team. It's community engagement. It gets the sportsman's club involved in the school. A lifelong skill and passion. When you learn how to, you know, play trap, a lot of times, kids learn trap shooting. And there's five major clay target sports. Trap is one of them. There's skeet, there's sporting clays, and then there's five-stand. So a lot of times, kids get in a trap, and then they're like, well, I'd like to try skeet shooting. It's a little more challenging. And then they might want to try sporting clays, even more challenging, or five-stand, which is, those are the more challenging games. But it's a lifelong skill. You learn a lot. It's like riding a bicycle. It's a skill you never forget. It's something that a lot of people, once they pick it up, they have a passion for it. It stays with them for the rest of their life, make memories. It's grown in popularity across the country. I think health and wellness, just being outdoors and engaged in this. It's, there's no running involved in a clay target sport, but you're at least outdoors. You're, you know, it's a social club, and it's a lot of fun. And I know a lot of the kids that are on the trap teams in other schools, they really, really enjoy it. This last page, if anyone wants to screenshot this, these are some resources, highschoolusaclaytarget.com. The New York USA Clay Target is a source of information. There's the College USA Clay Target website where, you know, people can get additional information about this club. I'd like to have permission to use the school's name. I know it might not be possible to really start this year, as I know there's the issue of a stipend for an advisor and things like that, but I would like to get word out. I'd like to get more student interest. I know that there's a few kids who would like to do this. John is willing to open up the Hudson Fish and Game Club on a Saturday morning for any student that wants to come at ten o'clock in the morning and learn, learn trap.
Not just the students. I encourage your parents.
Yes.
We can come too.
Of course you can. Of course you can, Diana.
And it's not hard. I teach youth archery and trap for July and August, and I have parents that look forward to coming more than her kid sometimes. You know, so they can shoot either archery or trap.
And if any of the adults want to come, Friday night is when they have open trap at six o'clock at the club. If anyone, any of the adults, anyone from the board, administration, just if you want to come and see what it looks like, what the trap range looks like, meet some of the people, meet some of the members, that would be great.
And if you want to try it, I'd be willing to come in on a Saturday.
Right, yeah.
Because usually Friday nights, we get pretty crowded with people that constantly come. We're open all year long, weather permitting. So on Saturdays, I can open up the club, and we can get total hands-on, so you can see exactly what the sport's all about.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Sure. So I have two. One is, how are the guns procured? Do they have to be purchased by the families, and where are they stored? And then two, could you elaborate a little bit on the Junior Hunter Safety Course? What's in the curriculum and what students learn?
The Hunter Safety Course would be open up to the parents also. It would have to be, you get a Hunter Safety Certificate, so you can actually go out and hunt for New York. As far as the shotguns and all that, I have them at the club, kept away in a safe along with ammunition. I have basically everything that they need. And once we start, if we get the okay, next year, we could apply for a grant through Columbia Green, which I've been getting, and it's up to five thousand dollars to purchase more equipment. And so we can pay for a lot of stuff. Hudson Fish and Game Club is willing to open up and get the ball rolling and fund some of this and pay for the initial registration fees when we do start. And hopefully, that five-thousand-dollar grant would come in and help out with the birds and the shells.
Can I touch on a couple of things there?
Yeah, yeah, don't worry.
Just, sorry, can you step to the mic? Yep.
Sure. Thanks.
I'm usually pretty loud. So the one question you had about the Hunter Safety, that's one part of it, okay? The Hunter Safety Course is very elaborate. It goes into hunting quite a bit. What we did at Castleton Fishing Game was any kids that wanted to take that course, we ran the course for about four and a half hours. It's supposed to be like a seven, eight-hour course. The rest of the time, it was out on the trap field with instruction, okay? So we ran through the Hunter Safety Course real quick, got them, so they were certified. They had to take a fifty-question test, you know. They all passed. After they passed, I took them out on the firing range and literally gave them a two-hour course on safety, how to shoot, talking to dominant eye, everything, okay? There's one other way they could do it. I had two kids that said, I will not sit through a Hunter Safety Course. I don't want to see anything getting shot or killed, you know. So they can take an online course with USA Trap, but then they have to take a two-hour course with a certified USA Trap official, which I am, okay? So no matter what course they take, they're going to get firearm safety training. And once the kids start coming, one thing that they didn't mention, they talked about having a range officer for every ten kids. No club, when you start, puts one kid out there without one adult with them that's a range officer to work with them. And usually, you're standing either directly behind them or a little bit to the right, especially because the kids are going, you know, one's here, one's here. I usually stand right on the edge of them here, okay? So if anything was to happen, if they're going to swing a gun that way, my hand's right there, okay? There's a lot of things you do. And until you're safe with the kids and know their proficient in what they're doing, you'll always have one adult with the child shooting. They're all student adults. You got to, you know, make sure they're doing the right thing. So just want to let you know, that's how far we go with the safety on this. There's, you know, we're pretty safe. That's why there's no accidents.
Any other questions?
Joe, I was going to say, a friend of mine brought me to shoot trap in April Park a couple of years ago, and I'm a pretty natural athlete, but that was a hundred percent my Achilles heel. I think I had a couple of rounds of zero at a twenty-five. We, as a district, would have to check with our insurance carrier, knowing that other schools, many other schools offer programs affiliated with the school. We know that that's a possibility. But of course, we protect the assets of the district and that. Were there any other additional costs? Oh, and I was also going to say, I agree with you, it's a brotherhood. You know, there are people who are willing to volunteer to spread this skill to other kids, which is a beautiful thing as well. Are there any other expenses, like the cost of the shot or while they're shooting the trap, the birds?
I mean, there, there are, you know, costs for, for ammunition, but I mean, John said that there's a, a grant. But I'm, I'm, I'm sure that the club is going to have to do some fundraising as well.
Okay.
Like I said, we'll, we'll start the initial paying for the birds and the shells. And I, I got money left over from last year's grant that's going to be going towards this. And we have a youth fund, a Terry Toomey Youth Fund that we can get money also out of our club to do this. But like I said, we're going to have to use the school's name and promote shirts and, you know. There's some cost that the, the school's going to have to, you know, promote like shirts and just little things. And like I said, you know, we'll see how it goes.
I don't, I, I think, you know, that this sport is, is rather affordable considering the club has shotguns that students can use. It's, it's not a super expensive sport. Baseball, a baseball bat's $400 or $500. So, I, I mean, considering.
Parents, yeah, consider what they pay for their own kids' equipment for their sports, you know. We try to, we try to reason and work something out as we go along. We also encourage that no students will bring any weapon to the school. They would have to go home from here to go get any equipment, if they have their parent's shotgun or something, to bring it to our club. And we emphasize that no weapons are allowed on school property. And like I said, our club has everything they need to start up.
Awesome. Yeah, it sounds like an amazing opportunity for our students. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, brings us to board reports. Audit Committee.
The Audit Committee met on August 6th at 10:00 a.m. I was elected the Chair of the Audit Committee for the year. We reviewed business office plans, including with Boce staff who are assisting, and a status update on the 2425 audit, which is in process.
Great, thank you. Facilities Committee?
We have a meeting scheduled for this Friday. There's some question about some members being able to attend, so we may have to reschedule, but we will have a report after that.
Great, thank you. Policy Committee?
I have Amanda's report since she's in the box. So, as a policy committee, we reviewed the applicants from the community that would like to join the policy committee. And we're going to be sharing out the final committee members soon. We want to thank everybody for their applications and expressing interest in that. We also worked on Update 8310 Workplace Violence Policy to reflect the reporting process within our district. And Policy 1120, School District Records, to reflect the NISBA updates and the current staffing model. Finally, we discussed that NISBA, New York State School Boards Association, can provide our policies this year and over the next few years. Stuff that's been duplicated, not updated for over 20 years, so they're going to provide a service first in that respect. And that's all I have for now. Thanks.
Great, thank you. For the Board President's Report, many of our aware, Calvin Lewis announced his resignation from the board. I would just like to take a moment to formally recognize Calvin and his service to the district. It was honored to serve alongside him. His unwavering dedication to the city of Hudson, the Hudson City School District, and most importantly, our students is evident in everything that he does. Though he's very soft-spoken by nature, Calvin consistently brought thoughtful insight and care to every board discussion and decision. We wish him great success as he takes the helm of the Hudson Youth Department and look forward to continued collaboration and support of all of our young people, both in and out of the classroom. Additionally, we'll be talking about filling his seat later on in this board meeting. As well, the board is also working on organizing a special election in regards to the sale of the John L. Edwards property. So, that concludes our reports. At this time, we do have a need for an early executive session. So, I make a motion to enter executive session at 8:53 p.m. for the purposes of discussing potential litigation and for the employment history of a particular person or persons. I've promised to be as quick as possible. And we're actually going to use the band room, so we have less of a hike. See you all shortly.
Second.
Oh, yeah, second.
All in favor?
It's part of the moving up ceremony.
All right, make a motion to exit executive session at seven eighteen PM.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all for your patience. That brings us to personnel agenda. Make a motion to approve personnel agenda items A one through seven and B one through four.
Second.
All in favor? Brings us to welcome new staff.
That's me. So it's my pleasure to welcome a few new staff members that are joining us and I'm going to read some of their bios. Aubrey Eric, graduate of SUNY Oneonta is twenty twenty-four with a bachelor's degree in early childhood and childhood education. She is completing her master's degree at SUNY Binghamton and this past school year was a substitute teacher in many different buildings, which is always a great way to learn. This year will be her first year as a teacher, full-time teacher, and fun fact is that she's a huge book lover. That all makes sense. So welcome.
Welcome.
All right. Uh, Thomas. You can go, Thomas. All right. We're walking Thomas as an elementary teacher in second grade. So as a new second grade teacher at MC Smith, he's passionate and energetic educator who grew up right here in the Hudson Valley in Red Hook, just down the road. He's a graduate of Russell Sage College, Estevi School of Education, where he earned a bachelor's of arts in childhood education with dual certification in literacy and special education, graduating magna cum laude. He's the second-year teacher with previous experience teaching fourth grade as well as serving for many years as a substitute teacher in the capital region and as a co-teacher at the local nonprofit Kite's Nest. Fun fact, Thomas is also a bookworm and a huge science fiction and fantasy fan, and he's excited to join us here at Hudson City.
Welcome.
Okay. I'll do Anna next. Okay. Yeah. Uh, let's see. I apologize, someone handed my my script just before the meeting, and it's in an email, so you gotta read the whole thread to figure things out. All right. Anna Sumakis, uh, received a master's degree after working in a classroom setting as a substitute teacher and a teaching assistant in Green Chinneys and Carmel Central School District. This is where she discovered the passion for helping students teach or reach their fullest potential. Oh, has a bachelor's degree in graphic design and MS in students with disabilities pre-K twelve from Long Island University. Fun fact, an artist and continues to do artwork as much as possible and always tries to find ways to combine creativity into her teaching. And she believes that'll help benefit students and make it more enjoyable for them. So welcome. And last but not least, Lily Sanchez. Very happy to be filling a long-term substitute position for us, earned her master's degree in science and teaching from SUNY New Paltz this past May of twenty twenty-two. Uh, rigorous classes, uh, in in former classes in pedagogy, inclusivity, childhood development, and became certified at birth to grade six shortly after receiving her masters and has an initial certification in birth to two and one through six, triple threat. Spent the last two years working as a fifth-grade teacher in Elmira, New York, and learning grew as a teacher while being there. Learned about being more cohesive in lesson planning and how to structure lessons so that students can understand what the standards and the learning outcomes are, which is tricky to do. I learned how to have a more organized classroom management procedures and routines. I learned to differentiate based on student data and use things like manipulatives, anchor charts, and graphic organizers, and we're going to ask her to demonstrate all those tonight. And there's some interesting facts. I'm an immigrant from France and moved to the United States and began first grade here. I'm an outdoor enthusiast, I love to swim, especially in hike mountains, and I'm working towards completing all the thirty-three peaks in the Catskills. All right. We're gonna hold you to it. Not here. Here. Well, welcome. They're all looking at me to spot her in the audience, I don't think that's gonna happen, not right now, but.
All right, welcome everybody, thank you. Uh, next that brings us to public forum, Leslie, did anybody sign up to speak?
Nobody signed up.
Great. Uh, superintendent's report.
That's not it. It has been an extremely exciting seven days, and I only have fourteen things to talk about. Uh, first, I want to recognize last day of summer school at high school was last week, first day of regional exams today. And um, I happen to come at the tail end of of a long summer school, having been a summer school principal before. It is, you think it's hard to get kids to come to come to school during the school year, having them succeed in summer school is tantamount to a miracle, so very grateful for the work of all the staff who chose to come in and work with them. And ideally, they've yielded some success and we'll see the results of that soon. Also amazingly, last week I got to see the kindergarteners here for orientation week. I saw them on their third day, and they looked like they were in college already. They were lined up and smiling, and anybody who's worked with kindergarteners knows that they're like crying until like December sometimes. Uh, so the kids that were there, I was so amazed, and at the same time, of course, the um, camp invention is going on, so you have the little ones and you have the big ones in elementary at the same time, and just fascinating and alive. So kudos to the people that were in partnership to to make that possible. And number four, we have a new communications person starting on Monday. Some of you may know that we coordinate with Bosse's and we have someone in district three days a week. And I just spoke with Brian, the head of communications at NAREC or Quest R three, and he mentioned that this is someone who's coming in with a lot of business experience in uh, PR, uh, which is sometimes very advantageous, you know, to adapt that to what we need here in the district. And I will say unquestionably, one of the initiatives for this year is to make our communications more about the people that live and work here and the students who attend. I mean, we've seen the website, website looks very professional, and when you're looking at content, you can see the difference between thirty thousand feet and three feet, and we definitely want to bring it to three feet. So we'll be working toward that. And I don't want to talk about the cell phone policy. But I will. Uh, as you probably know, New York State made a very late game decision last year initiating a cell phone ban, or I should say internet, where ready device ban in public schools. So every school in New York State is going through the same pain. And although the buildings did send out a communication late last year, and really with not a lot of time to plan, the board passed its policy, which they required to do. As we open school, uh, please know the principals will be sending a second communication to families tomorrow through Parents Square. And our plan is essentially elementary school students are expected to keep their phones in their teachers' designed storage, students' personal cubby or in a locker, students' locker. The high school, the plan at this point is for students to keep them in their lockers. We understand that is not ironclad, right? We're talking about what is tantamount to an addiction, and there are going to be some ripples and bumps in the road. But to be fair, uh, the school district has a responsibility by that regulation, phones cannot be on students' persons unless there is a adequate exception to that, such as a health need. Um, so it's not, this is not a district decision, this is not something the district really wants to do, wrestling children for their phones, but it's something that we are mandated to do as all schools are in New York State. When we open school, um, we recognize that we haven't had a lot of time to communicate this with fidelity to families. Uh, that although we will again this week, we recognize we haven't had a lot of time to share this with fidelity with students, and that's what we're going to do when we open school. Um, what we are not going to do is turn it into World War Three. The most important thing is we do not want to push the responsibility onto those that are working in the classroom because they have one job to do, which is educate educate the children and their care. So principals and I have been talking about what safeguards will we put in place to make this work until we can get to no cell phones. So you'll see more communication around that and ideally we'll have a successful roll into the school year. Does anybody have any questions or suggestions about that?
No.
It's the same problem at every school, and it's 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 a hard one. Leslie's been doing some investigation around the sale of property. Uh, it's important to understand some timelines, especially as the board is going to discuss what you're going to do with your vacant board seat. And if it does end in you deciding that you want to have the public vote, the same timelines apply. So what you discovered is that we must begin the process at least forty-five days prior to when we intend to have the vote. One of the biggest drivers in that, and and you probably know from other budget votes that you've seen, we're required to post notice of that in our public locations, which is usually one or two local papers, four times over seven weeks. So there's your forty-nine days, actually, that magic number, and you have to add into that that not all publications publish every day. So you might have one that's a weekly publication, you might have to wait until their first publication to start your clock. So at the soonest, you are talking the end of October, probably, if you were going to bring the public in and to do a vote for the um, the sale of the property and for electing a board member. And I think that um, there are some other logistical things involved. Leslie told me that we own our own voting machines, which makes things easier. All right. Okay, sometimes it's easier. They need to be programmed accordingly, we need to have the right materials for that. So I would say it's safe to say, if if you were hoping to do this, you're really talking November. You know, to be safe, to be fair, and to meet all the deadlines that need to occur, but just so the board is aware, um, if they so choose, um, that's a timeline we're talking about. Are there any questions about that? Are there any questions about that?
No questions. We, I will talk about it a little bit in new business, but we also have a 90-day clock from Calvin's resignation if we are to fill his seat by a special election, so it's other factor to throw in there.
Good to know. So we're, I have bookends. I had Mark pass something down to you, which I'm not asking you to vote on, but it's a resolution for the superintendent to appoint people in between board meetings. You've, the board has chosen to move to one board meeting a month, which can be very nice. The issue is that it does, to some extent, hobble the district as if, for instance, if we're in the second week of September, we're on September 13th, the day after a board meeting, and we have an unexpected resignation, one of our instructional positions. The way it is right now, that can't be filled until the board reconvenes and votes for someone to be placed in that position. So I wanted the board to consider, perhaps at our next meeting, to adopt the resolution so that we are able to. And it would be really in emergency circumstances, this is not to actively hire, you know, on an ongoing basis. Because really, once we're out of August, we should have a pretty good idea of who's working for us. But we all know that there are some unexpected things that come up. And especially in some of our still vacant positions, there are some very hard to fill positions, such as Spanish and agriculture. They're hard to fill and that is absolutely something where, it's no joke, we were talking, and it's true in all offices, in all districts, that a Spanish teacher walks in, they're fingerprinted and qualified and have experience. They're not leaving that office until the superintendent meets with them and we hire them. It's that rare a thing right now. So being able to do this is very, very important for the health of our staffing and being able to provide students with what they need. But we can discuss that now, we can discuss it at the next meeting, whichever you'd like to do.
It makes perfect sense to me. You know, the other option, if there's more business, is always to have an emergency board meeting, which can be brief and just for purposes of a personnel agenda or consensus agenda. So we got a few things we can consider.
And Mark has walked right into my trap. We have some people who are in the process of onboarding right now. And we know that we'll be ready to offer them a job, hire them before September 2nd. But they're not quite there yet, you know, we do our due diligence, call our references, make sure they're fingerprinted, go on to teach and make sure they have certifications. I wanted to ask the board's favor to do exactly what Mark has suggested. That sometime next week, perhaps on Thursday, we have just an agenda to appoint personnel.
I think my question about the document you handed out, it says in the case of an emergency, my question would be, could we define emergency a little bit more clearly?
Yeah, sure.
Just so that we can, can limit the possibility of, you know, overuse of the policy and we can say this is, this is defined.
Good idea. Can do.
Yeah, everybody available on the 28th? I may not be able to, but can we get a quorum?
I think so.
I won't be here, but I can, I can participate virtually.
Diana?
Yeah, definitely.
I'm okay if you wanted to do it at 5:00 too. I don't know if there are greater power that makes it be at 6:00, but it would just be, just to do the personnel.
Kirsten, are you available?
I'm thinking, I think I'm clear.
Okay, Matt?
If we do choose to do it earlier, 5:15 is a little safer for me.
Fine.
Okay.
That's fair, thank you.
Yeah, so I think we'll be able to get a quorum for that, even if one or two of us need to be virtual.
Okay, thank you very much. Some, I wasn't done, that's not 14 yet. There are some orientations coming up. We have this Thursday at 5:30, our ninth grade orientation. And next week, we have sixth grade, they're coming during the day, 9 to 12, both on the 26th and 27th. And the building principals will be sending that out through Parents Square so that parents are aware. And then kindergarten is having a welcome on the 27th at 5:30. I did take a look at the website and noticed, I could not find a calendar. So we're gonna fix that. These dates, I mean, we know how chaotic parental life is. All day, every day, not just the summertime, but this last week leading up to school, people just wanna know this, this, and this. So we're gonna work on that, even if it's a piece of paper with a handwriting on it that's on a picture on the website. We'll make sure that some things get up there so that people know what they're supposed to do. New teacher orientation is this coming Tuesday. We're gonna have our new teachers come in and they'll have an opportunity to work with their mentors, we're gonna do some professional development with them, we're gonna give them their Chromebooks, we're gonna take their pictures. With awesome time with their union friends and their mentors, like I said. But it is always awesome to be able to greet people, sometimes at the very beginning of their career, which tier six is gonna be a very, very long career. But it is awesome because they're energetic, excited, sometimes it's hard to be that way when you're not in your first year. And our superintendent's conference days are September 2nd and 3rd. And they are all day, so students will not begin with us until the 4th. And we wanted to invite the board to join us if you're available on the first day, Tuesday, the second, from about 10 to 12. What we're gonna do is have a convocation where we acknowledge our new staff, where we welcome everyone back, where we acknowledge our tenured staff. And then we're gonna have lunch. Because that's what friends do. So I'm hoping the board could join us and I'll send you a more formal invitation around that. So close to the end. Oh. I drove on campus for the first time two Mondays ago. And Lance interviewed me. I made a point of saying that I came on campus the second week of August and the facility looks amazing. And we know the race between June 30th and September 2nd is ferocious. While all of us are on vacation in an island somewhere, Tyler and his crew are doing everything, from floor to ceiling, making sure that everything looks just so. So I commend the work of that group, just phenomenal and so friendly. And when I was walking down toward technology last week, one of his people stopped me to make sure I wasn't a criminal, which was awesome. I think I had my badge, but I didn't have a holder for my badge, so I looked very conspicuous with my jacket on. But that's exactly what we should be doing here. And lastly, this is Dr. Pressy's last meeting with us. The last day in the district will be just two Fridays from, yeah? Yeah, so we wanna thank you. I've only had seven days to work with you, but thank you for your contributions to Hudson City Schools and we wish you well on your next adventure in Florida. Which is like being on an island.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. 14?
Well, thank you. Can you give Tyler and Dr. Pressy a round of applause? Thank you, Dr. Bailey. That brings us to our consensus agenda. Make a motion to accept consensus agenda items A through M.
Second.
I'm gonna ask that we pull item D from consensus.
Ah, gotcha, okay. So make a motion to accept consensus agenda items A through C and E through M.
Second.
All in favor? And then we'll make a motion to accept consensus agenda item D. Mr. Macro, you accuse yourself?
I accuse myself due to conflict of interest.
All right. So, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. And then that brings us to old business. This is a revised district-wide safety plan that has some more specific names and dates plugged into it, as requested at our August 5th board meeting. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Can I just make a comment around these, these safety plans, along with the building level ones, are a mandate, they must be in place before September 1st. But please know, not that I want this to live on forever, but know that we can make a change anytime that we need to. And sometimes that is necessary because staffing changes or we recognize a weakness in something that we're doing. So this is a living document and can always come back at any time, but the mandate is that we have to have something, you know, solidly in place by the time school comes open.
Great. Okay, so make a motion to approve the draft of the 25, 26 district-wide safety plan and authorize the final plan to be uploaded to the NICE Ed business portal.
Second.
All in favor? New business. First up is first reading of policy 1120 and all of its regulations and exhibits. This is a revision to our digital records policy. The original policy, the policy that we're updating named a different member of the central office as the digital records manager. And we're revising it, this is revised to have Leslie, as she's been acting in that role. You know, we take it very seriously, want all of our records requests to be met with promptly and hopefully make this clearer and easier to track. Any questions, comments? Okay, great. I believe. We can discuss it again at the September 9th Policy Committee and then it'll be on the agenda again on September 16th. Next up is the vacant board seat. Do we have the presentation to project? Is anyone? Stand by, we've got Austin doing laps tonight.
Yeah, no worries.
So as he gets this plugged in, as we discussed, Calvin's seat is open. Wanted to share some information with the board and the community so that we can make a decision that is both deliberate and transparent. So we'll get this up there, go through where things stand, some of the factors that we get to consider when we make our decision. And hopefully, at the end of this, have a clear path forward. All right, beautiful, thank you, Austin. So, yes, as we discussed, there's one vacant board seat. There are a few different ways we can approach it, but any replacement to the seat will hold, hold the seat until the, either the May 2026 election, that's if we fill the seat by appointment. Or June 30th, June 30th, 2026, if the seat is filled by a special election. Whoever is appointed to or elected to the seat may seek reelection in May 2026 if they are so inclined. There are a few pieces of policy and state governance that we need to take into account, first being policy 2150, which says that we have the power to fill any vacancy. Doesn't say that we must. And in the past, what we've done is we've had members of the public or the community submit letters of interest and the board votes to appoint one of those candidates to the vacancy. Requires a majority of the remaining board, so four members of the board must vote in favor of that candidate. Alternately. There are other parts of New York State education law that allow us to hold a special election within 90 days of the vacancy. Alternatively, they could also have the Bosse's district superintendent appoint if we don't meet that deadline and don't fill it. However, as a small city school district, we have that power to appoint. And we can also keep it open if we want to. As a small city school district, we do not need to fill the vacancy until the next election if we are so inclined. So that sort of leaves us with three options sort of on the table. The first option is to leave the seat open and vacant until the election in May. At which point whoever is elected will be sworn in that day and serve their subsequent three-year term, starting June 30th. The second option is to appoint an individual. It's totally up to us, we could pick anybody that we want to and say, you're filling this seat. Or as we've done in the past, have members of the community submit letters and pick from those who have submitted letters. And the third option is to hold a special election, which, you know, in and of itself, would usually be something that is cost prohibitive. Since we do need to hold a special election in the fall for the public to approve the sale of John L. Edwards, it is an option that is open to us. So everybody knows that was factored into the negotiations with Penrose, the developers, something we've been planning on and accounting for. We negotiated a, you know, larger earnest payment in order to compensate us for holding that election off-cycle because we were not ready to do it in May. And given the 90 days, the election, if we're using the election to fill the vacancy, would need to be held by November 3rd. Which is slightly complicated by the fact that normal election day is November 4th. So if we want to proceed with this option, I think the best plan would be to see if we could have a special election the last week in October. So that there's no confusion between our election and the general election, any general elections in November. Some people have different polling places, so wanna make it clear where you're going and what you're voting on. And then just a little bit more about the special election. Like our normal election, interested candidates would still need to complete a nominating petition packet in order to be placed on the ballot. So they would have slightly less time, but I think we could still give them about a month to get their petition packet filled out to be placed on the ballot. Alternately, you can always run as a write-in. And then, you know, the last piece is we would just need to sort of ensure that we could meet this type of timeline. So in early September, you know, notice the election and make the petition packets available for interested candidates. Their petition packets are due by law 20 days before the date of the election. So that would make the petition packets due sometime the first week in October, first or second week. week. And as I just discussed, leave us with the election date sometime that last week in October. So those are the options, and I would like to open it up to the board for thoughts and questions. I can start with Maureen.
I'm just wondering about leaving it open as an, as an option? Like, what would are the benefits or what would, how would that impact the board one way or the other to leaving, leaving it?
I don't think I would be in favor of that. I'm guessing most people wouldn't be.
I'm not saying to do.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I think, if, if nobody's interested in that, I think we could probably just dismiss that option, because I don't, I don't think we would leave it open.
Just take it off the table.
I mean, it does make it harder for us to make a quorum if there are people out.
Okay.
We have that many fewer chances.
Right, that you need to, right.
Yeah, and it also leaves us with an even number and the option of having a split vote three, three to three.
Yeah.
So is there another option that you prefer?
Well, I, I mean, I think the most logical thing is to appoint somebody. It just makes the most sense, right?
Diana, your thoughts?
From a financial standpoint and time and...
Yeah, my concern, my concern is that there's so many things going on and so many things to do, that this would be another thing to do in terms of having an election. So logically, I would think that appointing somebody, that's just my opinion, would, would be the most logical, yeah.
Yeah, my concern with potentially following through with a full election is that it's a lot to ask potential candidates to pull together all their nomination packets and everything within a month, and that month being September, when children are starting school. It's a very hectic time. I think it's also even more to ask of, of our potential candidates in that case to go through that effort for a term that will only last through June. So it's a very short period of, of service for a fairly significant investment of time and effort. So I would also be in favor of an appointing, or of appointing a candidate.
Amanda's joining remotely. She sent a comment in advance. Her comment was, "I'm in favor of holding a special election for this board seat. I think, given the transition in the superintendent position, it's important that we open the seat up so that members of the community who want to be involved in supporting this transition have the opportunity to run for the school board and have a voice at the table." Matt?
Yeah, I, I think the, the election is an interesting situation that wouldn't be considered if there wasn't the building sale. I don't think we have additional costs recurring necessarily to, to do it. I'd be inclined to put it out to voters and let people decide, but the complexity of this is also notable, between gathering signatures, the dates that we have to line up, you know, the confusion with the other election day. There's, there is some, some complexity here to manage.
Yeah, understood. Yeah, I think if, if we were not doing a special election regardless, it would not be a feasible option. In my time on the board, I've had, yeah, I've had a chance to make two appointments to fill vacant seats, and I, I think the sort of lack of transparency around the process and how the decision was being made is perhaps one of many, many factors that has led to the erosion of some trust in the board and the decisions that have been made. So in that sense, I'm attracted to an election and making it feel like that the members of the community really do have a voice and that we're not making arbitrary or capricious decisions based on no apparent criteria. So that, that would be my, my thought. And then, you know, the other part of it just is, we are talking about very tight timelines. There are some unknown factors that we still need to investigate, and we will be getting a little bit more information tonight, but perhaps in the, if we're having a special election next week, we could make that final decision, a special meeting next week, we could gather a little bit more information and make the final decision then. Maureen?
Yeah, I totally agree with you, Mark, on that, and I, I thought the same thing. But in theoretically, anyone who's interested from the community or public interest could send a letter of interest, right? And essentially, you know, if they have an interest in being on the board, it would just streamline it, right?
Yeah.
I mean, would, in place of an election, you could just write a letter of, you know, intent or interest.
Yeah, absolutely.
And be considered for the position.
I think, I don't know if anyone can hear me.
Yes, we can.
The difference there is the decider's base, the voters versus the decider's base, the board.
True.
And I, to Mark's point, I just, I, I think it's really important that we're here in larger community, but in this small number, our district is in rapid.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any other comments? Otherwise, I would suggest that we get a little bit more information from both Leslie's research and Virginia Benedict, who we're gonna meet with shortly, and then be in a place to make a final decision at our next meeting.
Which would be next week?
Yes, exactly. Yes, since we're planning on having a special meeting anyways. Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughtful comments and consideration. Brings us to public forum again?
We have Nikki Janito.
Great. Nikki, you know, everybody gets three minutes to speak. We're not allowed to entertain any questions or comments about district personnel or students. And would you mind, last time, people wanted to be able to hear the microphone, so ask your side.
Hi, everyone. I'm Nikki Janito. I just wanna talk about the new board seat that has to be replaced. I've talked to a lot of people in the community, and I just want to tell you what I've heard. We just had a vote in May, and many people that I've talked to, almost all of them, think that you should just put the next person who was voted, which would be Mr. Zabala, who's been here since he's been on that vote, and that is what most people in this community think you should do. Just wanted to share that. And also, my question, still has not been answered, so while I'm up here, I'll ask it again. Still waiting for my answer. What jobs are not going to be filled from retirees? Still put it out there.
Yes, we understand. Dr. Bailey's been here for a little over a week, and that's at the top of his list. We're all working diligently to get you your answer, Nikki. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, board discussion. Anybody else have anything else to add?
I just wanted to mention that after the last board meeting, I inquired about the broken clock up there, and Tyler was right on that, too. And he also said that the parts are obsolete, so I just want to point out the fact that the guys made the parts up to fix the clock as well. Thank you.
I never noticed that. Oh, great. So upcoming meeting dates, August 22nd, 2025, Facilities Committee meeting, District Conference Room, 4 to 5 p.m. August 23rd, 2025, School Supply giveaway sponsored by Pioneer Charitable Foundation and Stewart Shops in the High School Cafeteria, 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. September 9th, 2025, Policy Committee meeting, High School Library, 5 p.m. September 16th, 2025, Facilities Committee meeting, District Conference Room, 4 to 5 p.m. September 16th, 2025, Regular Board of Education meeting, High School Auditorium, 6 p.m. And as soon as we have a date and a time for our special meeting next week, we will be sure that it is noted to the public. At this time, we do have a need for a second executive session at 8 p.m. for the discussion of real estate transactions, the employment history of a particular person or persons, and potential litigation. Do I, we also need to appoint me clerk pro tem?
Is Dr. Bailey gonna be there the whole time?
Gotcha, yes. And appoint Dr. Bailey as clerk pro tem. Second, anybody?
Second.
All in favor? There will be no further business after this executive session. We thank you all for being here, and hope everybody has a great start to the school year.